Okay, I'm going to call the school meeting to order for 2025. And ask everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. My name is Ed Alkali. I'm the moderator for the school board meeting. I'm going to start out with the rules for both the school meeting and the town meeting, and that way I won't have to repeat them later. These are the same rules I've used in years past for most of you have been here before. Please state your name when recognized. When you talk, keep your voice up. We don't have a microphone tonight, so hopefully if you can keep your voice up, it can carry over to the microphone that's at the camera. All comments should be addressed through the moderator. I'll recognize one speaker at a time. Please give your name when recognized. Please be courteous when speaking or listening. Do not address any comments to any other individual or question the motives of another person. Please confine your comments to two minutes. I don't think that'll be a problem because Peter's not here tonight. Joking, I love you, Peter. Speakers should speak only to the topic on the floor and should not discuss other issues. Nonresidents shall be allowed to speak but should be seated in the back. For amendments, please put all proposed amendments in writing and only one amendment at a time. The only exception for both the school and the town meeting will be amendments on the budget. That doesn't need to be in writing. If you request a secret ballot, it must be in writing, signed by five voters, and received before the time of the vote. Once an article is voted on, there will be no further discussion on that issue unless new information is revealed. A motion to call the question should be made only after all sides have had an opportunity to state their position and requires a two-thirds vote. Each article requires a motion and a second for discussion. Each amendment requires a motion and a second for discussion. According to statute RSA 91A, we need to know the name of the person who makes the motion and the second for the record. So please, whoever makes the motion, state your name, and whoever makes the second, state your name. Procedurally, I'll read the warrant and then ask for a motion and a second to open the warrant for discussion. If there is discussion, I will then read the warrant again and ask if you are in favor of it. If there is no discussion, I will just ask whether you are in favor of the warrant. You may overrule any rule proposed by me by majority vote, and this won't be a perfect meeting, but I want to make sure that it's fair. Are there any objections to these rules? Okay, I'm going to get started then and read the results of the election. Article one, to elect a moderator. Ed Alkali received 40 votes. No one else received votes. To elect a clerk, Kathy Carrier received 41 votes. No one received any other votes. To elect one member of the school board for the ensuing three years, there are a number of writing candidates. Kane Druin got one, Lillian Druin got one, Tim Sorgi got one, Joe Ferris got one, Gillian Nealan got one, Kaitlin Quimby got one, Kristin Stelmach got two, and Kaitlin Quint got two. So Kristin Stelmach and Kaitlin Quint, work it out between you who's going to be a school board for the next three years. Article four, to elect a treasurer. Kathy Carrier received 40 votes. No one else received votes. So Article five is to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,792,696 for support of the schools, for payment of salaries for school district officials and agents, and for the payment of the statutory obligations of the district, with $31,000 offsetting this amount from various grants. This article does not include appropriations voted in other warrant articles. Do I have a motion to bring this to the floor for discussion? Joe Ferris moved, and Leah Valderras seconded. Discussion, questions, comments? Sarah?
How much of an increase is it from last year? And where are the budget increases?
The increase, the total increase is $405,185. And most of the increases are in special education. Regular ed tuition also is an increase, about $276,000. And then transportation went up a little, which is just an incremental increase per year of the contract.
Yeah, go ahead, Sarah.
I know that one of the things that drives the tuition is how many kids are in the schools and how much that's divided by. But also, for us, it would be, okay, say, one year, Conway, Eaton have 75%, and the kids from Albany are 25%. Has that percentage changed? Has that would change the way our share?
Go ahead.
Are you asking, has it changed from last year to this year? Or overtime in general?
I think these figures are based on what we spent last year. But I'm kind of going to, not those figures, but what we're on now. I confuse myself, don't worry.
For tuition?
Yeah, the tuition.
So the current proposed budgets for the number of students we project will be at each level in the 2025-26 school year. And then there are adjustments made for actual membership, actual attendance at the end of the year. And then it's credited back in the upcoming budget for the following year. So next, in the proposed budget, we're expecting 22, almost 23 elementary students, about 16 at the middle school, and about 30 at the high school. And you're right, that's dependent on the proportion of Albany students as compared to the other sending towns at each of those levels. So for elementary, it's just Albany, Eaton, and Conway. Obviously, you know, middle school, seventh and eighth grade, you add Freedom and Madison, and then at the high school, it's everyone. I'm not sure if I answered your question or not.
Any other comments, questions? Yes?
Hi, John Howell. Were there any other options considered? I know some months ago, there was conversation about possibly moving to Madison or some other place. Was the outcome of any of those discussions?
We have been looking at that for quite a long time. There was been an options committee that we had formed a couple, I think it was two years ago. And we have looked at various options pretty thoroughly. And choices are somewhat limited. But I think that it's the view of the board that Conway is the way to go as far as logistics and everything else. It just seemed like the proper move at this time.
But we're in the midst of it.
And we are in the midst of negotiations.
So we don't really know for sure. So we're in the negotiation process of the new tuition agreement for K through six. So we don't want to get too carried away with talking about all that. But, you know, our options are limited. So, but we have, like Dan said, we have looked a lot of different, you know, we've looked at other areas, so.
Is the previous contract a five years?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Sarah?
My curiosity. How many Albany students go to either or both of the charter schools? I know a couple years ago, I think, ten said it was.
I can find that for you. Between Albany and Eaton, there are 15 students, K-12. It would take me a little bit to find out which ones belong to which town. I would assume.
Eaton doesn't have enough because Eaton counts.
So, yeah.
Probably, probably you have 10.
10 or so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, questions? Kathy?
Kathy Finney. You said it was over 20 years?
The previous one.
The previous one.
It's on the board right now coming to an end.
Okay, so is that, is that 1.8 million? Is that spread out over 20 years? Or is that voted on for this budget, that whole allotment come out?
It's not spread over 20 years. It's for this budget cycle.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yes?
This is a very basic question, but I'm trying to understand the idea of the 20-year contract. So the contract doesn't include, you can't in 2005 have a price for 2025. So there's a price negotiation every year in spite of having a contract? Or I don't understand what the contract means.
Can I answer that? Can I answer that? In the contract was how, because I was on the board then, how the tuition every year was going to figure out. So you get fresh costs every year, but, and I think it was.
So the formula was.
It was a formula based on AEM and also a little bit of.
Equalized value.
Equalized value.
Yeah, it's a percentage rate of students versus on the towns and the equalized value of this town, so.
Go ahead, Amy.
And it's currently at 65% of that is based on attendance, and the 35% is based on the town's equalized valuation. The proportion that Albany represents when looking at all three towns together, Conway, Eaton, and Albany, for K-6. And the K-6 contract expires at the end of next school year. The seven-through-12 contracts follow a year later. So they're slightly off-cycle. So right now, it's just tuition negotiations for the K-6 contract that expires first.
Any other comments, questions? Yes?
Kathy Finney. So you said there was about 15 Albany students or has 10?
Yeah, at the charter school.
At the charter school.
Between the two charter schools. Yes, I'm sorry. No, Albany has far more than 15. So at the elementary level, Albany, we're projecting 22.67 students for next year. It's a calculation that we use, but kids come and go throughout the year. That's where the .67 student comes from. So 22.67 students at the elementary level is budgeted in that tuition line for next year. 16.47 at the middle school, grade seven and eight, and 18.4, sorry, 30.42 at the high school. That doesn't include the 10 or so students that are choosing to go to one of the two public chartered schools in Conway.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Kathy?
Thank you. And Albany tends to be somewhat transient, especially like Riley and Trail Park. So a lot of the things that get passed are passed on what's going to happen. But I guess it's just an average, is the best guess. But I, you know, I'm aware, having been bus driver, that students were coming and going on regular. So is, so that the 1.8 million, what's that $31,000 offsetting? That's of the 1.8, right?
Yes, that's correct. So the $31,000 comes from different grant funding sources that offset what your town raises and appropriates for the total operating budget. And that total operating budget is not just tuition. The tuition lines are specific to elementary, middle, and high school. That also includes transportation and other costs in the overall operating budget.
Yes, thank you.
But your transientsy point is spot on. We experience a tremendous amount of turnover in any given year with our students moving from place to place. I will say that school consolidation in Conway, just, if I might just take one quick.
Yeah, please.
Has helped with that to some degree because all K-2 students are in one building. All 3-5 students are in another building. So as opposed to there being three K-6 elementary schools, where if a family, you know, moved and, you know, had to switch schools because they needed transportation, for example, they would be bumping from one second-grade class to another in another building, whereas now they stay in the same building. So it doesn't prevent kids from moving out of the district, right? Which still happens also. But within the district, it's decreased that to some extent. Kids are still moving, they're just not having to switch schools.
Go to a different school.
That's correct.
That almost sounds ingenious, Amy.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I don't know.
Almost, almost, not quite there, but. Any comments or questions? All right, I'm going to read that article again and ask everyone to vote on it. Article five, to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,792,696 for the support of schools, for the payment of salaries for school district officials and agents, and for the payment of statutory obligations of the district, with $31,000 offsetting this amount from various grants. This article does not include appropriations voted in other warrant articles. All those in favor? All those opposed? Article five passes. I should have had everyone up here introduce themselves before I started, so I'm going to take a break before Article six and just ask everyone at the front table to introduce themselves and indicate what their position is.
Curtis Coleman, the school board.
Dan Bianchino, school board.
Amy Frichette, superintendent.
Mike Way, business administrator.
Pam Stinson, director of student services.
Thank you. Kind of quiet down there. Okay, moving on to Article six. To see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be placed in the capital reserve fund special education previously established for this purpose. Do I have a motion to bring this to the floor for discussion? Leah Valderras' motion, second. Joe Ferris, seconds. Okay, all those in favor of Article six? All those opposed? Article six passes. Article seven, to see if the district will vote to authorize the Albany School Board to enter into an eight-year tuition agreement with the Conway School District for education of Albany's K-6 elementary school students. Do I have a motion to bring it to the floor? Kathy Finney moves, second by Leah Valderras. Comments, questions for Article seven? Yes, Kathy?
I wanted to comment on the closing of the school of the North Conway. John, thank you, but you escaped me. So with all of those students all coming in now that the population is bigger in the elementaries anyways, right? This $15,000, I'm not sure who I'm supposed to ask. Is there anything in this capital reserve fund? I'm just curious if there's anything in it we're adding to it or are we repaying, or I'm not sure what's happening. All I see are dollar signs, you know?
Okay, so we already voted in, Article six already passed.
Okay.
But, you know, let's, we're informal here. So did you have a specific question about Article six that you want answered?
I wish I had a better grasp of what I'm hearing. You know, if I was a little more involved, I'll say that. I don't want to vote on anything I don't understand, so I'm not going to. Yeah, I jumped backwards, right? Because we already voted on six, we're on seven, and I got, I was still.
It's okay. Do you have a question, though, that you want answered?
Just what the capital reserve special education fund, like $15,000, doesn't seem like a whole lot of money. The rest of it, I was just curious if there's anything in that fund as it is, is there anything in that fund as it is right now?
Okay, do you all understand the question?
I need one of these pieces of paper that I didn't look at, so it's a question.
No, it's a great question. So this capital reserve fund is established to kind of build up a safety net of funds so that if special education services of a student or a particular group of students fluctuates in any given year, you don't over-expend the operating budget. So it's hard to predict out, when we develop the budget in the fall, it's for the following year. It's about 18 months out. It's really hard to predict what special education services all of the students who qualify are going to need that far in advance. So this trust fund is established in each of our towns, actually. So towns add money to kind of build up a reserve in the event that there were to be some special education need that was not planned or known at the time of budget development. So the board each year decides, based on previous year expenditures, kind of where you are in this current year's budget, how close are you to over-expending or under-expending? They use all of that information in addition to what we know students are going to need in the upcoming school year based on the kids we know we have to determine how much gets added to that fund each year. So currently, there's $162,386 in there. The board proposes adding the $15,000 to create a cushion. We often say about $250-ish thousand is kind of a good place to be. One out-of-district placement for a student that has needs that are significant can cost $250,000 in one year, or.
I had, sorry to interrupt. I just have to quantify. Placements and services are more and more expensive annually, and currently, we've received not for this district but for another, a placement that will cost over $350,000 next school year. So where we used to say $250, we're saying it this year, but next year, you may hear me discuss a higher balance, to be aiming for a higher balance in your trust fund. But it does protect the district for unanticipated costs.
Thank you for that. I hope that in a year or 18 months from now, $15,000 means something, you know? That just, yeah, and it's a good cause. Would that ever be used for a disaster? If there was some kind of a disaster where the kids needed to have help in one way or another, families or whatever, would that ever be allocated for that kind? Or is that a whole different thing?
It's a whole different thing. So these trust funds are established for a very specific purpose. And the funds can only be expended from these trusts if the board holds a public hearing to expend the funds, and they have to be used for that purpose alone.
Thank you, Amy.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, no problem, Kathy. So we are officially in Article seven now. Kathy?
Kathy Carrier. I'm just wondering if with the new configurations of the schools, is that going to change? Like, this is a K to six, but we're sixth graders now at the middle school. Will it eventually change to a K to five contract, a six to eight? I mean.
We're currently in talking with our attorney about that, and that is one of the questions that we have there. So we're still working that out. But it is definitely under the discussion of how we're supposed to approach that as far as going forward because that is exactly what has happened, so. But we're working on that.
Might I just add one more thing?
Yes, please.
The reason it's, the board has kept it K-6 for right now, though, is that, as you know, in seventh and eighth grade, Ken at Middle School receives students from Madison and Freedom. And so it would shift the calculations for Albany and Eaton should you just be K-5 and not be right there with Conway, right? Who does K-6. We calculate things differently when it comes to different towns' apportionments of the middle school budget, keeping sixth grade separate for Eaton, Albany, and Conway because more sending towns feed into seventh and eighth grade. So it's budgeted completely separately for that reason.
Any other questions on Article seven? Okay, Article seven, to see if the district will vote to authorize the Albany School Board to enter into an eight-year tuition agreement with the Conway School District for education of Albany's K-6 elementary school students. All those in favor? All those opposed? Article seven passes. Article eight is to transact any other business that may legally come before this meeting. Does anyone, this is kind of the catch-all. Does anyone have any comments, questions about anything regarding the school board or the school district? If there are no comments, I will call this meeting to a close, and the town meeting will follow up just after these folks clear out and the selectmen come forward. Thanks, everyone, for coming from the school district. Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to call the 2025 Town of Albany Town Meeting to order. Article one is to elect all necessary officials, and I'll announce the winners. For the selectman for the three-year position, Rick Hyland got 35 votes, Joe Ferris got one, Kelly Robitell got one. Rick Hyland gets that position. For the town moderator, Ed Alkali got 43. For the trustee of the trust funds, there are four people who got one vote. Sarah Knox, Ashton Coleman, Kimberly Guptel, Russell Guptel. So any of those four, I'm sure any two of them who want to do it will get to do it. Supervisor of the checklist, Susan Kelly, won that with 41 votes. I'm going to read Article two. After I read Article two, I'm going to let folks look over the budget, which is on page 78, 7 through 11 of the Town Report. If you don't have a Town Report, they're in the hall, and you're free to get one. I'm going to let everyone have at least two full minutes to look everything over. So after I read this article and if it's brought to the floor for discussion, I'm going to just be silent for two minutes so everyone can look over all the budget items to see if they have any concerns or questions, okay? All right, Article two is to see if the town will vote to. You know what, before I do that again, I should have everyone introduce themselves.
Kelly Robitell, Selectman Chair. James Gurn. Rick Hyland.
Thank you. Article two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $964,847 for the municipal operating budget for the ensuing year with $85,000 to come from December 31, 2024, unassigned fund balance. This article does not include appropriations in special or individual warrant articles addressed separately. Do I have a motion to bring to the floor? Joe Ferris moves. Can I have a second? Amalia Torres, seconds. So page 7 through 11 has the budget. I'll give everyone a couple of minutes to just look that over, and if you have any comments, I'll call on you after a couple of minutes. I'll, I'll bring, I'll call on you after a couple of minutes. And while I, everyone's looking this over, I'll just make a note, if anybody has any amendments to this proposed budget, you can specify a specific line item that you would like to amend, but ultimately, the bottom-line number is the only thing that gets amended, and it's up to the discretion of the selectmen how they use that bottom line. Okay, you can continue to look over the budget, but I'm gonna open this up to the floor for discussion. I saw one question in the back, please just state your name.
Sure, Megan Chapman, from Royal Village Center, and my question is whether there's any contingencies built into the, into the budget for potential changes, given uncertainty in federal funding and things that might have repercussions locally.
So, just in case the camera didn't get, the question is, are there any contingencies, just in case there's any changes in terms of federal funding that the town receives or doesn't receive?
I would, yeah, go ahead, Rick. We don't receive any federal funding to operate the town. It's all done through taxation of property owners, so there shouldn't be any, any direct effect from anything from the federal government.
Follow-up question?
Clarification, keeping up with some of the ownerships line, other things that might be affected by, you know, federal spending changes. Is the only question if that's been part of the consideration of the budget?
No. We should be good with what we've got.
We can, we can move money appropriately through the budget. If something falls short, the selectmen can make a decision to buffer that or protect it. I understand what you're saying, but, yeah, we have that ability to do that.
Just, we asked the selectmen to inform me, the eighty-five thousand that comes from December thirty-first unassigned fund balance, that is the leftover surplus from last year's budget, I'm guessing? So, just clarification.
Go ahead, Rick.
The, the general, the, that fund is basically leftover money from all our budgets, all along the line, so, I mean, might be, some of it might be from five years ago, four years ago, et cetera. And I believe the state recommends that we keep somewhere between ten and seventeen percent for emergencies, and anything above that belongs to taxpayers. And we just feel that helping, you know, with the, with the tax rate is beneficial to everybody in town.
Follow-up question?
Follow-up. So, what is the kind of ballpark total amount that's in this excess fund?
That's a magical number. No, no, no.
It is.
No, me, it is. I've asked that question of DRA, et cetera. It's a combination of money that's left over that is covering for unpaid taxes, it's leftover money from the budgets, and all different type of stuff, and there's really almost no way of putting an exact number on it.
So, it's not in the treasurer's report?
Thank you. Sarah, go ahead.
Yeah. Might it be, it would be an older number, but might that figure be in the audit report?
I have not been able to determine whether it's in there or not.
Any other guests, please?
Doug McThicker. I'm from One Lansing, so I'm interested in the solid waste budget. At one time, Albany was paying Sandwich so that we could use their transfer station, it's much, much closer, and it looks like it's been zeroed out. When did that happen, and what's gone up?
If I am not mistaken, the last time I was a selectman, years ago, we do some plowing up in that area in exchange for the few people that used the Sandwich transfer station, okay, as a swap, and that's been in an agreement with the Town of Sandwich.
Oh, with far enough...
We don't, yeah, we don't, right, yeah.
And so, then you pay to have that part plowed in Sandwich's, you use the transfer station.
Exactly. Yeah, there's a, a deal there, and it was, it's been done, oh, quite a few years ago. It's a, yeah, a handshake type thing, yeah. It works well.
Happy with that.
It works well. It works, and we don't hear no complaints.
Any other questions, comments on the budget? Yes?
Jennifer McTolby-Lowes. What does member attendance mean for planning, zoning, and conservation commission?
Go ahead, Rick.
I mean, what is the budget for member attendance, that's the question.
We, it's been a longstanding tradition in this town to pay the members of the planning board, the zoning board, and the conservation commission a stipend of thirty-five dollars per meeting, and that's what that totals up to. That's what's budgeted for.
We have to budget for a full board, whether we have a full board or not, in case we get a full board, so if we don't have a full board, there'll be excess.
And we're looking for volunteers, yes.
Yes.
Try and keep your voice up. Yeah. Just curious, when is the cutoff with the Conway Fire and Rescue coming into play here? They're, they're proposing to, you know, pull this station out of Conway, and that's gonna create a big problem for us as far as response times and stuff. They also were talking that their legalities of what they're going to do is, say, somebody's up on top of Mount Shakur, or they're obligated, they're not be obligated to go up in the bottom of the parking lot and wait, and the state has to call rescue people in from, like, Manchester, and they take two or three hours, and the state funded, to go up there and rescue these people, whereas now they go up with their ten or twelve people, but it's, it's generally, sometimes it's, it's for something like a broken arm, and they could've walked out, so this is, this is off, you know, it's coming into play soon, and I didn't know what, what, when the cutoff is, if it's gonna be this year or next year, you know, because we're trying, you know, we gotta look forward to what's gonna happen here, because, you know, if they pull out of Conway, we're, we're kinda, you know, the response time's gonna get really nil. I don't know, we gotta do something with the volunteer situation, or, you know.
I was gonna defer, but let me just say that they're not pulling out of Conway, they're becoming part of Conway, and I think John Eastman will speak to it if we ask him.
Yeah, Billy, John, Johnny Eastman's here, town manager for, for Conway, maybe he could speak to that issue?
Well, first, I live in Albany, so you can be sure Conway's not pulling out. So, I have a fire on the, so, to answer Bill's question, it's two questions, but Conway, the Town of Conway is now the proud owner of the fire and ambulance, because they exalt. Chief Remington, Chief, Assistant Chief Richardson is, Albany is an integral part of this community, and Conway's not, we're not going anywhere. Conway staying right there is, we're still going to service. The only difference of what they were doing is instead of, we used to call it non-precinct and Conway Village Fire District. Now, we call it formerly Conway Village Fire District, which is part of Conway Fire, ambulance, and also water and sewer, and non-precinct, which we have for Conway, which there's a portion of North Conway that we contract, North Conway with, and the other parts of, of Conway. And Albany has a contract with Conway Fire, and the Conway Board of Selectmen have left it, they wanna keep it the way it is, so Albany is going to continue to contract, as long as the people here want to contract with Conway, which I would think that you would, I would like to see that, because I think their service is second to none, so there's, we're not going, we're not going anywhere. We're gonna provide fire service and ambulance, and the only thing is, is that we're gonna try to do it better and, and cheaper, so. And as far as what you're saying, there has been some discussion, I know if you go out of the camp, one of the things that has happened, you know, like, we, we contracts, or Conway Fire contracts with Littlemore, now the Town of Conway, there's places, there's times, and one of the things, especially in White Mountain National Forest, is that the federal government would love Conway Fire, which Albany pays when they're in Albany, to go do their work for them. I'm not suggesting that we should help people, but, well, one of the things that we're looking at is, nothing's gonna change this year, but the chief and myself and the management team is looking at that the federal government, they need to, they need to have some skin in the game, and Albany shouldn't have to pay, because, like, like Bill said, sometimes eight, nine people would come, well, it's getting a lot more scarcer to find, you know, personnel. Currently, right now, we have, we have nine full-time people, and that's seven plus, you know, the chief and the assistant chief, and it is, it is more and more of a problem, and what we're gonna try to do is, as we all know, it's not easy to negotiate with the federal government, but White Mountain National Forest is owned by them, and we, and I say we, because I'm a taxpayer, I own a home in Albany, we can't afford to continue for Conway to say, we're gonna bring all these people in, we have to pay the people. The people at Conway aren't gonna pay for that, they don't expect Albany to pay for that, and again, it's a philosophy thing, and it would be decided, but at some point in time, we're gonna start pushing back, the federal government to say, you've gotta do that. Now, I agree with what Bill said, if someone's in a life-threatening situation, we're, Conway Fire, ambulance, they're gonna go get them, that, that's, they're just gonna do, always do the right thing, they rate people. But to what Bill said, if someone has a broken arm or something like that, you know, there's, there might be some expectation in the future that them and their family, or whoever they're hiking with, might have, you know, and do it with dignity and all of that, but we're not gonna leave anybody in a life situation, but, I'm not gonna lie, we're gonna push back, Conway's gonna push back on the federal government, like Bill said, we can't be, we can't be going, hiking, you know, ten miles, that, that fishing game has to assist us, because fishing game is really in charge once it goes into that, that area, so I hope that clears up. But Conway, Conway's in, you can be sure of that.
Any other questions about the budget? Kathy?
Thank you. Kathy, just the first thing that comes here, and, like, I don't want this thing to end up dragging on for everybody, I remember in my first meeting, people just talked and talked, but I really wanted to try to understand it. What has changed the purpose of the Drake Hill Road Expendable Trust Fund to the Bridge and Culver Expendable Trust Fund? What was the purpose of the first, when you mean by changing the purpose of it?
Where, which page are you on?
Article three.
We're still on Article two, Kathy.
Oh, okay.
See, you, you know what, before you were a little behind, now you're a little ahead? We're gonna just get it right in the middle.
Bring me in, you go on here.
Hold on to that question. Yes?
Megan Chapman, again, I just wanted to ask why the Waste Management budget is going up to the solid waste. And I have a separate question about the library budget, which we're very much in support of. We had some challenges in this last year, actually getting the slip that would be it for Albany money to be paid to Conway, so I just hope that can be addressed, so that that budget is well used.
Okay, so the first question is the waste management, and why has that, what, what page is that on the...
Those, the Waste Management is on the last week of the budget, section ten.
Okay.
There's also the Solid Waste Albany, you have another question about One Lansing.
Okay.
And then the library budget is, is in the last section, Culture and Recreation.
Okay, so, one of the selectmen, can you speak to why the budget for solid waste has gone up approximately thirteen, fourteen thousand? Rick, go ahead.
The solid waste budget varies every year. It depends, it is a calculation using the estimated equalized value of three towns. We're involved with Eaton, Albany, and Conway in the solid waste program for the district, and it's calculated off the budget, the capital reserve funds for closing the landfill area at the very end, which I've been told is about thirty years down the road, as well as preparing the next section of that landfill. The other fund is the, for equipment, and it just varies every year. I mean, I think last year it was thirty-nine, or thirty-nine thousand dollars, this year it's fifty-two thousand dollars. It's all in that calculation that's agreed through the contract we have with the three towns. It may be less next year. The more we recycle, the more cost-effective things are.
I just wanted to add that Rick's our new representative to solid waste, and they're working very hard on a new memorandum and working very closely with Conway and doing a lot of work with it. We appreciate it.
Yeah, this is a fair price for, for trash disposal. There's, there's no question there. I've never had an issue with it, I've had issues with other things, but this one here is, is pretty realistic and gets the job done. I don't think anybody complains about, when they go to the transfer station, how organized it is, and it's reasonably clean for, for a transfer station, et cetera, and just probably bring less trash. But it fluctuates, it goes up and down.
Can you repeat your question about the library?
The second one was more of a comment, and I forgive me for bringing it here, the library budget, I noticed that we budgeted significantly more last year than what we spent, and I know that it benefited from Conway's library services. I tried to get a slip from the town to take to Conway, so that, like, my little percentage would go, and I had trouble getting, doing that process, so just raising it here to make sure that, you know, Albany residents are able to, you know, properly support the Conway libraries.
Okay, that's noted. We'll, we'll find out what's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer McTolby-Lowes, on page ten, Culture and Recreation, patriotic purposes, do we have, what are the patriotic purposes, what happens with them?
Go ahead.
Most of it's maintaining the flagpole and the flags.
Here?
Here.
Thank you.
Yes?
I have a question about a, a budget item that went up significantly. I look at town administrator's salary, presumably against the retirement line as well, is that based on increase in hours per week, or is it just a drag, so it's quite a while, why are we doing that?
We, over the past year, we... We, over the past year, we, our prior administrator, Kelly Collins, left. She retired. And we were very, very fortunate enough to hire Alisa, which everyone can introduce yourselves later and make her feel at home. She has great promise. We're very happy with what she's doing, but it's new to her. So little patience, but she's now full-time. Kelly Collins was part-time. She was retired. She didn't draw state retirement. So with our new employee, she's drawing straight the state retirement. That's that higher number you see there. And an extra day a week. The extra day a week is a Thursday right now. But at least for the time being, the office is staying closed on Thursdays so she can train and learn the ropes and learn everything. And eventually we'll, we'll move into longer hours at the office. But we're very excited about Alisa. She's a smart girl.
So Alisa, why don't you just raise your hand so everyone, there she is.
She doesn't want to speak tonight.
Making her raise her hand, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes?
Tori Bruin. One thing I did notice that went up significantly that I guess I want some clarification on is under the section for Financial Administration, the postage went, posted went up eight hundred dollars. Is there a significant reason why it went up so high that you could tell me? It's on page eight, the first line. Last year it was two hundred and one. This year it's one thousand fifty dollars for postage. Y'all sweating, did I say?
Yeah.
See, they were waiting for that question, and you got them.
It could be bad. I'm thinking, yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Rick.
The town of Albany purchases from the post office pre-stamped envelopes. I know the last time I was a selectman, it was, what, three, four years ago? Okay, we bought a bunch of them before the postage went way up. We were running out of them, and now we have to replenish that supply with seventy-five, was it seventy-five cents to mail an envelope now? Okay, the cost of the post office has gone up significantly, plus we need to get three or four boxes of them. And that is the reason.
So next year it'll fluctuate.
Next year it'll probably down some.
I'll stamp them for you for half of it.
Did you have something to add to that, Sarah?
No, I was going to say maybe a lot looked over.
Okay, all right.
We stocked up one back several years.
Yeah, I mean, that whole stamp is seventy-three dollars.
I know.
Yes, Billy?
Yeah, I was just going to say maybe not because the former president there ordered, like, a hundred and ninety million dollars worth of electric trucks for the postal service. So good luck there.
Okay. Any other comments, questions about the budget? Okay, yes. Cut it in under the wire.
I just wanted to ask if there was any consideration on the, of where at the end of this winter? But winter salt versus winter sand and environmental impacts of salt, sand versus salt. Or salt versus sand. Because I know the budget for salt is significantly higher than the budget for sand.
Until they create something that matches salt, we use salts. It just, that's, there is no replacement. It is what it is. Salt's more expensive than sand. Sand is local. Salt comes from away. It's not that they would use more. If we have more storms, we would, but it's not. And the impact, and because I've used salt many times, the impact is not as great as the safety that it, that it gives you. So you have to take a little bit. So without salt, we're not going anywhere. And if there's a substitute someday, we'll, we'll look into it. But right now, salt's in.
Any other comments, questions on the budget? Kathy?
Karen Ethan. Animal control salary. I know the animal control officer that was helping me over a number of years was well worth over a hundred dollars. Who is our animal control officer? Is it still with the sheriff's department?
So right now, we do not have an animal control officer. We're looking and trying to come up with a solution for that. So yeah, right now, it is, it does fall onto the sheriff's department, which they really, they have better things to do. So we are on the hunt for that, if you know of anyone.
There's a hundred dollars on the line here for anyone who's interested. Did you have something over there?
I just said I would do the animal control officer.
Oh, okay. There's a possibility.
It's working.
Any other comments or questions on the budget? We can, we can figure out the animal control officer after. Yes, Sean?
Follow-up. Sarah Knox kind of informing me about the unassigned fund balance, page 75.
Yes, go ahead.
And as I explained to Sean, that that is almost usual now for your, whatever you will, because the audit, which that is part of, is not done in time. Like, the 24 audit is not, this is the 23, because the 24 one is not done in time to get in this, in this year's town report. And that's the way it's always been. So those are older numbers that are in there. But, you know, if you do a little math, you can kind of figure out sort of what, you know.
Its representative.
Yeah.
Is there a question?
I just wanted to share back on the answer to my question earlier that all townspeople can see what the unassigned fund balance is from two years ago, 2023. Thank you for the information.
Okay.
Just a clarification too.
Yeah.
I used to be a reporter, and I had, there were many towns that I had, you know, write it up in newspapers and stuff and go prove that it was, it's not that I'm any smarter than anybody. It's just that I had a lot of experience.
It's appreciated. Thank you.
Sarah, I was for trust to be watched.
I think she's also going to be the animal control officer. No. Anyway, any other comments, questions on the budget? Okay, Article two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of nine hundred and sixty-four, nine hundred sixty-four hundred thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars for the municipal operating budget for the ensuing year with eighty-five thousand to come from December 31st, 2024, unassigned fund balance. This article does not include appropriations in special or individual warrant articles addressed separately. All those in favor? All those opposed? Article two, the budget passes. Moving on to Article three, to see if the town will vote to change the purpose of the Drake Hill Road Bridge Expendable Trust Fund to the Bridge and Culvert Expendable Trust Fund for the purpose of maintaining, replacing, and repairing bridges and culverts, with the selectmen being the agents to expend. This article requires a two-thirds vote to pass. Do I have a motion to bring to the floor? Joe Ferris makes a motion. Leah Valderr seconds. Comments, questions on Article three? Yes, Joe?
Yeah, this, originally, this, this trust fund was created for Drake Hill Road Bridge when the state was gonna, when the state had a grant, is my understanding. The state now has discontinued the grant. So why are we going to take, why are we going to take this money and divert it in other places when we're going to have to fix the bridge anyway? It's on the tenure of red-listed bridge. And also, a follow-up on that is how much money is in there? And that money that's in there is going to go into the bridge culvert, which basically is the road, into our road maintenance.
Okay, so it sounds like there's two questions. One, two, why are we moving the money out of this fund if the, if Joe believes the bridge is going to need to be repaired anyway? And the second question is how much money is in there? Is that right?
It's on the state tenure, it's on the state red-listed bridges. It's not, I don't feel the bridge needs to be replaced. The state does.
Okay. Go ahead, Jim. Or Rick, either one of you?
I won't find it, Jim. The Drake Hill Road Bridge Expendable Trust Fund was set up, and it was tied to that grant. We can't use any of those funds without that grant, and that grant, like you said, has gone away. So to free those funds up to be used, we want to move it into the Bridge and Culvert Expendable Trust Fund. Now that money can be used, if we pass this, to work on that bridge, depending on what we decide to do with that bridge.
But it could also be used for any other, for any other bridge.
Yeah, if we have another bridge or culvert fail or needs repair, now that, those funds are available for that.
Yeah, I mean, we know, I think it should stay at the Drake Hill. It should have Drake Hill incorporated in there so that money that was originally put in there is specifically for that bridge, because we know it's a bad bridge. And we know it's going to have to be replaced sooner than later.
Right.
That's just my.
Right, so if we do this, then the funds are freed up to do that, if that's the direction that we need to go in?
Provided for Drake Hill, but, yeah.
Billy?
Yeah, there's two bridges. Which one are we talking, south or on the?
The northern.
North.
North. So if somebody just gives you a little slope of paper asking for it to be earmarked for that bridge?
Are you asking about amending this article?
Yeah, just so it says, the language is like Joe's talking about, that it's earmarked for that bridge.
Okay, so if you want to do an amendment to this article, it has to be in writing. So you can think about it. There's another question that's going to be asked, and a couple more. So think about if you want to amend, and if you do, please put it in writing. Yes?
The first question is just, he asked how much money is in the fund, and I don't believe that was answered. And then the second question is, to clarify.
Okay, let's, let's take that first question. How, how much money is in that fund?
It's on page 26. Twenty-six.
Current balance is, yeah, one ten, one hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars, seventy-five cents as of December 31st, 2024.
And what is your second?
Second question is if it's, as you said, you know, marked red, the state, is there a budget that is expected to be needed to do the necessary repairs of that bridge? Has that been assessed by the town at this point?
Curtis, do you want to?
So Curtis, so we, this is all coming from an old matching grant that we had to save the money. We had to have the money if the grant came available, our number, our call. We'd have the money within a 12-month period. So that's where all this is coming from. The state candid years ago. So there was some assessments that were done. But anything that we have to do going forward, we would have to relook at it. And it would be more than a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So we would have to, as a town, sit here and go through this and have a budget and appropriate the money for it. I think by putting it into a fund that, the new capital reserve fund, it just gives the select board a little bit of, gives the select board a little bit of flexibility to address other issues if we have them. Obviously, Drake Hill Road, the bridge failed, probably a hundred and ten thousand dollars would be enough to fix it. So, but it does give us some flexibility. If it's damaged, we can, we can fix it or another bridge in town.
Go ahead, Rick.
It also gives the select board the ability, along with the road agent, if we had a bad storm and we washed out a bridge or had severe damage to the bridge, it's also a, the ability to be able to repair that bridge if it gets damaged.
Like, for instance, we ran into an issue a year ago with a bad rainstorm, and we had to spend over eighty thousand dollars on an event. The FEMA at the time didn't give us a nickel. They didn't say it was, we just didn't, they didn't think Carroll County qualified. So then we had to come up with that money from another, another line and fix that because obviously that was one-third the town municipal budget for summer hand maintenance combined. So, you know, for situations like that, because historically, the federal government has not helped small towns like us a whole lot. So two years ago, they didn't help us at all. So it's not some new thing. So, I mean, you look at, if you look back at the line on budget I just was looking at, for over forty-five thousand acres of federal land in the town of Albany, they gave us a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. So we don't get a whole lot of help from the federal government, haven't ever. But this just gives us some ability to deal with some issues that we may have.
One other thing, Curtis mentioned that we had an inspection done. We had an engineer take a look at that bridge. I don't know, it was probably 2019, 2018, right in there. And the engineering report came back with pictures and whatnot. The underside of the bridge is falling apart. And this is why it's on the red-listed bridges for the state. It's, it is falling apart. And I want to go down and look on the underside of the bridge. We've been talking with Curtis about what we could do to Band-Aid that or to patch where it's coming apart under there, and we're considering that at this point as well.
Yes?
Just a follow-up question on that is are there other red-listed bridges or bridges and culverts of concern?
The only other one is the covered bridge made of wood, which is going to be on the red-listed bridge. Because it's made of wood. We did back after that report, the engineer's report that came back, we reduced, the select board at the time reduced the weight capacity going over that bridge, I believe from eleven tons down to three tons, if I'm not mistaken. We reduced the tonnage on the bridge and put up appropriate signs so that the liability of the town is covered.
Right, Kelly?
The importance of this article is that the way that the Expendable Trust Fund worked is without the matching grant, we can't touch the money. If we pass this, now we can access the money. If that bridge started to fail or if Curtis had to do some work to it to keep it going, he couldn't use that money to do it. This will free us up to use the money for that bridge or for anything else that, of importance that came up. But without this passing, that money stays pretty much landlocked. We can't touch it. It's just, and without the grant, so it really doesn't make sense. It's going to sit there, and we can't access it, and there's no grant to match it. So we're trying to make sense of it and make it usable for us. So that, that's why we come up with this.
Leah?
Leah Valderr. I know I'm not jumping to Article four and five, but when I look at page 26, we have the Highway Expendable Trust, and then we have the Drake Hill Bridge Expendable Trust. The Drake Hill Bridge Expendable Trust, once, if the article passes, will then become a Bridge and Culvert. So that will address any additional culverts or any additional bridges that the town has. It gives the select board the opportunity to utilize those funds that are there. The Highway Expendable Trust is for roads, is my understanding. Can these trusts be used if one, say, runs out to be from another, or is, is that a possibility? If that bridge gets, the expense of repairing that bridge is higher than what we have in there now? I can't remember if this was.
You have to, you have to use the money for what the Warren is intending.
What the Warren-
Yeah, you can't, but we have other means of, we have a highway fund that we can-
Cool.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Malia?
She has been first, I mean, go ahead.
Okay, Amalia's seating this floor, go ahead.
So, just clarifying here, if we move or change basically the trust name essentially, we can still use that money to repair the red listed bridge?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, it's for all bridges and culverts and that.
Perfect.
Malia?
Does the town has a liability if there is a fall of the bridge while a car is passing with a car or a child? Is the town liable for the loss of the life? Or have you liable?
I can tell you, it really depends on the circumstances, so, you know, I don't think any, we're talking in a vacuum without any facts, so it's hard to answer, I would think, but feel-
Well, I kind of feel that the state red listed the bridge. If they felt it was worse than that, they'd close the bridge. So the liability is going to go somewhere, I'm hoping to the state, but I don't know how that would work. But they would close the bridge if it was to that point, so we're not there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Curtis?
So, I'm not exact numbers, but there's like 950 red listed bridges in the state.
No.
You're probably driving over them every day, so.
Any other questions? Yes, Kathy?
Were these bridges and culverts anywhere aligned with Route 16 with the upcoming construction on Route 16 and is it going to be anything doubled up or type thing?
I mean, wouldn't have any, anything to do with that, that would be state's expense. These are for private roads, side roads in Albany.
Okay.
Any other comments on Article 3? Okay, I'm going to read it again and ask for a vote. Please put your hands up high because it's got to pass by two thirds, so I have to just take a count. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to change the purpose of the Drake Hill Road Bridge Expendable Trust Fund to the Bridge and Culvert Expendable Trust Fund for the purposes of maintaining, replacing and repairing bridges and culverts with the selectmen being the agents to expend. Article requires two thirds vote. All those in favor? Okay, all those opposed? Okay, the Article 3 passes by the two thirds majority. Moving on to Article 4, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 10,000 dollars for deposit into the Bridge and Culvert Expendable Trust Fund previously established with those funds to come from the December 31st, 2024 unassigned fund balance. Do I have a motion to bring to the floor? Remind me your name again.
Tori Druin.
Tori Druin, thank you. Second, Amalia Torres. Comments, questions on Article 4? Kathy?
That's what I was wondering about the unassigned fund balance, what exactly does that mean? Does it mean that this money there that's not assigned can be used if it's reappropriated?
So, it's leftover funds from previous budgets and things like that, so that's a fund with that, and we're pulling from that in order not to, you know, pull from taxes, it's the pull from that fund that we already have.
Thank you.
And then, Greg?
This is where we add to the bridge fund. This is where we start putting more in case we do have to do a big job to a bridge, so this is, we're going to kind of piggybacks on the last one, where we'll start, start a bigger fund.
Any other questions on Article 4? Okay, since there was minimal discussion, I'm not going to read that one again, just ask all those in favor of Article 4? All those opposed? Article 4 passes. Moving on to Article 5, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 50,000 dollars for deposit into the Highway Expendable Trust Fund with 50,000 dollars to come from the December 31st, 2024 unassigned fund balance. I have a motion to bring to the floor. Tori Druin moves, and Dan B. Kino seconds. Comments on Article 5? Questions?
So, this money is not coming from new taxation?
Yes?
Just a question to, like, us, who's responsible for paying for highway repairs? I assume we're talking about Route 16?
No, Route 16 is state, it's state, it's all state.
So which highways are, who this be for?
We call them highways, but it's all the roads. You know, all back roads, dirt roads, paved roads, it's all, everything else.
It's just those roads?
Yeah.
Except for this. Thank you.
Any other questions on Article 5? Okay, I'm not going to read it again. All those in favor of Article 5? All those opposed? Article 5 passes. Moving on to Article 6, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 6,000 dollars for deposit into the Revaluation Expendable Trust Fund previously established. Do I have a motion to bring to the floor? Johnny Eastman moves, seconded. Tori Druin seconds. Comments, questions, Article 6? All those in favor of Article 6? All those opposed? Article 6 passes. Article 7, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 100,000 dollars for the purposes of continuing the maintenance and pavement of Albany Town Roads with 100,000 dollars to come from the December 31st, 2024 unassigned fund balance. This is a special non-lapsing article and will not lapse until December 31st, 2026 or until complete. Can I have a motion to bring to the floor? Tori Druin moves, Joe Ferris seconds. Sean?
Can someone just speak to the language of special non-lapsing?
What does special non-lapsing article mean? Go ahead, Rick.
Most Warren articles for funding, okay, require you to spend them by the end of that fiscal year, which would be the end of next year, or, end of this year, December 31st. This here is extended to December 31st of 2026, so this will be expended sometime this year or next year, depending on what Curtis decides to do with paving of roads and that sort of thing.
Joe?
Does the road agent have a special line?
So, this piece would be, we are going to overlay Stacy Lane and we are going to pave the hill on Chase Hill, and then we're off. This is just in addition to the normal paving that we do, it's just, and I don't think that next year we'll have to probably do this, I just, I don't think we're planning on other than, because I think the school budget next year we're all going to have to deal with, but we've been, over the last seven or eight years, we've been doing these articles to kind of catch up on paving that we didn't do for years. And the price of asphalt obviously has risen a lot, so it's really kind of put a hurt on a lot of the town's usual budgets, so we've been doing this to try to keep ahead of it, so those are the two roads that we want to keep in good shape so we don't get over the curve where it's really expensive to fix them.
Sean?
Curtis, did you say paving on Chase Hill? That's new, like paving over existing dirt?
Paving over, paving, overlaying existing pavement.
Oh, with the-
Yes, and we're not adding anymore.
Some dirt roads being paved.
No.
Any other comments, questions on Article 7? Okay, I'm not going to read it over again. All those in favor of Article 7? All those opposed? Article 7 passes. Article 8, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 1,000 dollars to be added to the Chapel Capital Reserve Fund previously established. Do I have a motion to bring to the floor? Tori Druin moves, Joe Ferris seconds. Comments, questions about Article 8? Yes?
On page 26, the Chapel Capital Reserve is 24,506 dollars. What is that?
On page 26, the Chapel Capital Reserve indicates there's 20, it looks like 24,506 dollars, and the question is, what is, what is that compared to Article 8? Or is it, is the 1,000 just to be added to that? Go ahead, Jim.
So, those funds are there for anything that we need to do within the chapel, and there's a, another article down the line here about that, but that's so we can do some repairs on the chapel, actually, the steeple needs to be reshingled, so that's what those funds are going to go for. And this article is just to keep putting a little bit in that so we can continue to take care of the building.
You guys are meeting once a month, and you've invited other people to come. Is this committee going to be helping decide how to use those funds?
They're going to come up, try to come up with ideas and options, and they're trying to include all of you people to come up with ideas to present to yourselves, so we can decide as a town what we should be doing with that space and what we should use it for.
Yes?
I can give a brief synopsis of what we're aiming to do with this space and why we'd like the funds, is to turn it into basically a space for the community, whether it be a food pantry, donation center, rental space, something that we need, so we're looking to you guys to give us those ideas. So whatever you think the community needs, we want here.
Thank you for the committee's work on that. That's great that some things are happening with that.
I'll just add that we're hoping that with everyone's involvement, we can come up with some ideas and next year at this meeting, maybe presenting some things for everyone to vote on and be able to move forward with it.
Any other comments? Yes, Kathy?
Just one, Ed, to second your commendation for the young ones. I appreciated our visit out into the chapel to, it gives hope for somebody like me to know that the young ones are growing up and becoming evolved, and it's really exciting. Congratulations and thank you for having interest to try and help out the town, it's really important, and people will love to see your smiling faces.
God bless the young'uns.
I took a picture of both signs and I shared it with my own community, but my fault, so thanks. We can't wait to hear it.
Any other comments on Article 8? All those in favor of Article 8? All those opposed? Article 8 passes. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 15,000 dollars to repair and reshingle the chapel's steeple and other maintenance, engineering and repair work. These funds to come from the Chapel Capital Reserve Fund. Do I have a motion to bring to the floor? Tori, oh, wait, what is your name again?
Lily and Druin.
Lily and Druin makes a motion, and do you want to, and Tori Druin seconds that motion, okay. Those young ones are hot. They're going strong, okay. Article 9, any comments, questions? All those in favor of Article 9? All those opposed? Article 9 passes. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 3,000 dollars for additional maintenance of the town cemeteries with 3,000 dollars to come from the Cemetery Expendable Trust Fund previously established. Do I have a motion? Joe Ferris moves, seconded. Tori Druin seconds. Comments, questions on Article 10? All those in favor of Article 10? All those opposed? Article 10 passes. Moving on to Article 11, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 6,000 dollars to be added to the Town Hall Capital Reserve Fund previously established. Do I have a motion to bring to the floor? Tori Druin moves, Joe Ferris seconds. Comments, questions on Article 11? Joe?
Yeah, what are we, what are we proposing for the sixth grant, just adding that to the stuff on? Does that just-
So that when we do have the-
In case stuff.
What's in the fund right now?
6,023 cents.
I'm sorry. Yes, okay. Any other questions, comments on Article 11? All those in favor of Article 11? All those opposed? Article 11 passes. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 1,000 dollars to be added to the Emergency Management Capital Reserve Fund previously established. Do I have a motion to bring to the floor? Joe Ferris moves, seconded. Lily and Druin seconds. Comments, questions on Article 12? Yes?
Just to quickly know what kinds of expenses this would go towards, because we were talking about different kinds of emergencies before, just curious.
What kind of emergencies would the 1,000 dollars in all Article 12 be designed to go for?
For the general?
Yeah.
It's for emergencies for the town, but most importantly, right now, if we have to replace the standby generator outside the building here to provide energy to heat and light this in the event of emergency, or in our day to day operations. Right, just for instance, I'm told right now, we can't run air conditioning in the building with that size generator, so eventually it's probably going to need to be replaced.
Any other questions, comments on Article 12? All those in favor of Article 12? All those opposed? Article 12 passes. For Articles 13 through 18, I'm going to take a minute and have everyone read them over. If everyone is in agreement, I'm going to ask that I read them all together and we discuss them all as one and then vote on them all as one. If people want to separate them out, we can do that, but why don't we just take a minute and everyone take a look at all those to see if we can discuss them all together? together, just to save a little time? Okay, I'm going to read them all and then ask for a motion to bring all of them to the floor for discussion. Article 13, by petition, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 2,000 dollars for the Family Resource Center at Children Unlimited. Article 14, again by petition, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 1,708 dollars for the operation of Tri-County Community Action Program, Inc. Service Programs in Albany, Transportation, Energy Assistance, Weatherization, Guardianship, Head Start, Homeless Intervention and Prevention, Disaster Relief, and Tamworth Dental Center. Article 15, by petition, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 3,000 dollars to support Albany Home Delivered Meals, Meals on Wheels, Congregate Meals, Transportation and Program Services provided by the Gibson Center for Senior Services, Inc. Article 16, by petition, to respectfully request that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 4,243 dollars in support of Starting Point Providing Advocacy and Support to Victims of Domestic and Sexual Violence and Their Children. Article 17, by petition, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 1,000 dollars for the Conway Area Humane Society for purposes of supporting continuing services for stray, abandoned, and neglected animals brought to the shelter by animal control or private citizens no longer able to care for them. And Article 18, to see if the Town of Albany will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 3,055 dollars for support of the- the sum of three thousand fifty-five dollars for support of the White Mountain Community Health Center to help meet the healthcare needs of the uninsured and underinsured of the Town of Albany. Do I have a motion to bring these to the floor? Tori Drew and moves to bring to the floor. Do I have a second? Joe Ferris seconds. Comments, questions, concerns on anything from Article thirteen through Article eighteen? Yes, go ahead.
Can you tell me about Children Unlimited? That's a, is it a prior? I know the other places that are, you mentioned in all other articles.
Does anyone want to handle it or?
They're the same. They're, they're right on West Main Street in Conway. And I know by experience that they help with younger kids, they help with learning disabilities and learning disorders and a lot, a whole host of other things, but they do fantastic work.
I think they, yeah, I, I know.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've, I've known them as well. They do, do a lot of good work for, for children. Yeah, Johnny?
Do they petition, do they do a presentation to the board as well, or do they just submit it?
They submit it with a lot of information. They do submit the petition. From time to time, we get a visit. We should get more visits, honestly, but we do have a history with a lot of these people that precedes that, that we, we understand and we, for as long as I've been doing this on and off, it seems it's the same groups and they're all worthwhile. I know Rick would love to see him in here every week, but.
Johnny?
One time question?
Yeah?
On Tri-County CAP. In their presentation that they give you your things, because I'm familiar with them, do they, do they tell you how many Albany people that they serve? Like, for example, fuel assistance, do they tell you what? Because I think the program itself is good.
I'm getting a nod that, yes, they do.
I think the program is good.
Yeah.
But I think the management is terrible. They, last year.
We didn't fund them last year for that, for that reason.
Well, I believe in the, the admission of what they do, but like fuel assistance, for example, almost eighty percent of their fuel assistance account was not expended. And I know in Conway, we're trying, the people in Conway vote for us, so I don't have any say on that, but it's out of the year. And I don't want to see the money not go through, but it's almost like, and I, we probably, and I don't want to put the board, or at least we're in a bad situation, but I'd almost like to see the money stay in the town and if someone needs fuel assistance in the town, make sure that some of the Albany gets it. That's, that's my role. I, I, I think the service itself is wonderful. I just, I, that's why I asked about a presentation, it wasn't a gotcha question, it's just-
No.
In Conway, we get the runarounds.
We did last year.
And we tried to, you know, nail them down on how many people in Conway get a fuel assistance, so we had multiple, multiple, multiple calls to our office saying, you went to Tamworth and the door's locked, they won't let us in. So people are going, not able to get fuel assistance. And my question was, I mean, you may not know, but does anybody in Albany have the same experience? And that's probably a-
The town did last year. And we, we, we have a, we have a list that they have to adhere to and they have to supply us with certain information. And last year they didn't and we didn't fund them. This year they did and we had no reason not to fund or at least ask for the funds. So we got a kind of a close eye on them like you do. And as far as giving out our own fuel assistance, that's-
It's difficult.
It's difficult with a one-person office especially. I mean, it's, the idea is great, but the coordination will be tough.
I'm still going to vote for it, I just wanted to add more than that, that's all.
All right, yes.
Just a question, which has been partially answered by the comments so far, but to know that these are standard petitions that come on a yearly basis and how the requests compare to prior years. And then I was curious to know if there were any of the petitioners here who could speak in favor of the petitions being adopted?
Again, I wish they were and we can't, we could require it, but that would, no, as, as I'm saying, it's complicated even further, but they are recurring. They're every year, they're the same groups. Aside from the one we just spoke about, everyone else is five-star as far as we're concerned. We have no problems with any of them. The, the numbers don't fluctuate much, very little year after year, which I would, I'm surprised about. There, there's no spike really. But yeah, it's recurring, it's every year. And they're all good causes.
Billy?
Yeah. We, the town has, they have way back in the early ages, you know, made a long time, but these, these programs have been with the town for quite some time, most all the programs. So it's, they, like, like you said, they're pretty decent programs. I know that the CAP program has a, a box outside and you fill the application outside. It does go, you know, to the little thing to get through. It's, it's a good program, pretty, so it's, you know, it's, it's very helpful no matter what it is.
Okay. Yes, Leah?
Leah Valverde. Selectment recommendation, most of them except for two, there was two to one. So it was not, and I can't remember, is it okay for a reason why the one?
You can ask.
I can ask. What's the reason behind the one?
Don't ask me, I can't tell you.
What's the reason behind the one?
That's me.
That's you. Yep, what, what is, is there a lot of people here that are, aren't familiar with that two to one?
They're, they're, they're all good programs, okay? They all receive federal grants and funding. They receive state funding. This is easy pickings for them because they have a small crowd to, to, to get emotions going and whatnot. I'm not a believer that I should support funding for these and charge all the taxpayers in town in their taxes that are continuing to go up for these expenditures. And I think if people want to donate to them, they should donate them on their own behalf and take the tax deduction for it.
Kathy?
I don't disagree with you, except I want, I want you to know that I'm familiar, unfortunately, with each one of these and fortunately. Every one of these services has been here for the last twenty-plus years that I've lived here and I've utilized all or some of them every year since I've lived here. And I also know lots of people who have utilized the services. As far as Tri-CAP goes, they seem to come in just in time, just when you really need the fuel, but they, the only thing that they kind of require is they send out their applications at a time and people don't really pay attention to them until, you know, it's a little too late now, it's an emergency and things like that. I can't imagine the amount of paperwork they go through, but I know that I would not have, I would be hard pressed to have heat for some of the seasons and I've always been grateful for all. Every single one of these services has come through for me or somebody that I know very well, so. And I just also want to say that you guys and girls seem to be experts, like you guys know this language, you know this lingo. I'm sitting here trying to absorb, but I'm not voting on everything because it seems to be going so fast, but I see the numbers too and I see that, that you are good stewards of our money. I, I don't see that there's crazy asking or, or, you know, money that's, I see plus, I see a lot of black, so that's good and I thank you for that. You know, some of these monies like, like fifteen thousand dollars, I commented that it might mean something in a year from now, but I hope it means more. Fifteen thousand dollars is worth more in a year from now than it is today. And it's really not much, so these little, these smaller ones that, that get spread out amongst everybody, I think it's kind of the, the condition of our town because we have the, we have people who, who do revenue and then we have people who don't. And I think that's, it's like the condition of every town. I, I don't know, because we don't have all the big services and everything, so it really hits a pocketbook. I, I don't disagree with you, but I was, I, I'm going to be raising my hand for every one of these because I know exactly what these things mean.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other comments? Yes?
Very quick comment, supporting what, the comment that was just made, since it was mentioned that, you know, many of these organizations receive federal funding, state funding, the fact that there may be questions around federal funding coming through this year, it seemed like a reason to go to favor all of the additional items.
Sean?
Two comments. One is that a lot of towns have the town meeting on the second Tuesday of March and for these small organizations, it would be pretty much impossible for them to be at all places at the same time. So having met some of the directors up on the top of them, they're short-staffed and they're struggling and they're giving their best and I think most of them did present at least paperwork, if not someone in person, so I'm grateful for that. And then I had the, the asked, the question, I think it's page twenty, is our tax rate comparison? Our local tax rate in our municipal last year was two point zero five, so that's two dollars five cents per thousand, is that right? Is that kind of how that works?
Sean, can you hold that till we get through these?
Well, this is the key point, if I'm right, if it is two dollars and five cents per thousand, then, and I could be wrong, but, you know, some of these things that are like three thousand dollars, what's that means is it's costing an individual taxpayer about six dollars.
Okay.
Annual taxes. So what's the value of something around six dollars for what these organizations are providing?
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, questions on Articles thirteen through eighteen? Okay, if it's okay, I'm not going to read them all again and I'll just ask Articles thirteen through eighteen, all those in favor? Articles thirteen through eighteen, all those opposed? Articles thirteen through eighteen pass. Article nineteen, to act upon any other business that may legally come before this meeting. This is the open area where anyone can get anything you want off your chest.
One to one?
It's your one time here.
May I?
Yes.
Thank you. I wanted to follow up on what I was saying about the hard work that you're doing. And when we were voting and those blanks were there, I was, it, it just screams the, that you have a lot more on your shoulders than you might normally have. I mean, the idea of, you know, a town or paying from our own resources, fuel assistance or anything like that. It, it's just, it's better left to let people do it in their sleep and, and as far as the Tri-CAP people go, I just wanted to add that I found them to be super helpful and always right there and always there. And then if you turn every single paper I've ever sent in, you do it like that, I figure it's all because of the COVID foolishness that their doors are still closed and maybe it makes it easier for them to, to process their stuff instead of having people come in and out the door all the time because I'm certain that they're short-staffed as well. But anyways, I want to thank you guys for, I mean, it's obvious right here, I can, I can see the numbers and I, and I appreciate your sacrifice to making this make sense for anybody running our town as well.
Yeah, Curtis?
I just wanted to mention, if, one of the, I know two people got a school board seat and they probably weren't loving for it, obviously. So if they, either one of them don't take it, we need a third person on the school board. Dan and I, if we don't go, if one of us have a, have a conflict, it means Pam Crosby, Amy Bichette, and the finance administrator all have to reschedule and they go to a ton of meetings and it's very difficult. So it means Dan and I have to be at every meeting, every time, everything. We can't ever miss anything, which is fine and we can make it at work, but there's got to be one more person in the town hall that can get on the school board. If you have young kids or you know someone that has kids, be better off if you get those kids in a system because you will be more invested in it, but if you don't, you're retired, you want to take some time, maybe you're a teacher or whatever, and you knows how that kind of works. It would be really nice to have, have you involved because we're not going to do it forever, so someone's got to step up. I mean, I've had no luck.
Young'uns? Do you hear that? Yes.
At least one person, that was, one of the two is really interested.
Okay, great.
But they, but, so I'm part of a Facebook group of community members.
Yeah.
And some people didn't know, they didn't receive information about when the meetings were made. Yes, I know, I know that you guys do a good job, but some people were questioning, wait, is there a meeting, is there not? Is there money, is there not? And so, so they didn't make it here, but some people, at least one of them is really interested.
So that raises a good question. You know, I know that we put the sign up out in front of Town Hall and I asked that Elisa puts it on the website. Is there any other way we alert people as to the town meeting?
Public and the paper.
In the paper.
The paper is the other, the third option.
Yeah.
So I don't know how else, unless it goes on the Facebook page, do Albany first of the page.
It's on the whole website.
Because everybody is now on Facebook, so.
It's on the sign.
It's on the sign and yeah, it's.
It's always the second Tuesday in March.
Always.
Always.
It is. I didn't know there was a community webpage. Is it the Albany?
No, it's just, it's just a group of friends in the community that we all talk with one another. So it's like a private chat.
It's a private chat.
So remember, second Tuesday.
And say the meeting is like every, on the second Tuesday, then that one the other.
Yeah.
I think that everybody's been, the way it's been advertised and posted, it's been consistent for at least ten years.
It's quiet sometimes.
It's quiet sometimes.
Just like it's cricket sometimes, where usually you hear a rumbling coming forth. This year was just, it just showed up.
Last year was too.
Yeah.
Yep, last year was too.
Can I make one comment please?
Yeah, please.
If nobody wants that seat, I'll give you two weeks and if you'll have me, I'll take it. But please offer it to everybody else, but I don't want you to go without a board, so.
Did you mention, you said, you know, one of the people is interested, is-
And that's great, please.
What is that? Is it Kristen? What is her name?
Kristen Stone. I've got it written down. Stone.
So if, would you mind following up with her and having her contact the school board? That would be great.
Yeah. And Curtis, if, if we need, uh, if you're someone.
All right, I'm out, she's in.
We got all kinds of people who want to do it. Yeah, go ahead, Rick.
By default. We have openings on, on some of our boards also. Planning board could use some members, the zoning board could use some alternate members.
The only board that's full is East Coast over here.
Yeah. Because it's a family or anything more choose.
I mean, this is a good point and this is for anybody in the town who wants to get involved. There's always openings to get involved in something, so whether you're here at the meeting or watching on TV or just talking to friends, you can always call the town, speak to Elisa, speak to Sandy, speak to one of the select, and speak to me. And there's always openings for somebody to get involved and opportunities to help the town.
And if there's not a spot, they take alternates. So you can, you don't even have to be a voting member, but you can go and be part of it too, in a way.
Yeah, Rick?
We also have money in the budget, okay, in various lines for training. So if you feel uncomfortable about being on a zoning board or a planning board, we have money in the budget to get you trained and to get you information about what the job entails.
Sean?
It's not really town business, but I was wondering if the select board could give us an update on anything having to do with Route sixteen?
Quiet. They're, they're working, they got them, kind of their marching orders from the last meeting. I couldn't make it, I was bummed out, but I watched the YouTube and I thought the meeting went very well. I think that the residents of Albany really showed their stuff. Everybody was, seemed very informed about what was going on and we're kind of all on the same page and I think the state's on the same page as us right now, so they'll be having another meeting over the summer with the next phase. And I think everyone wants, the next phase is going to be what type of land they might need. So I think you're going to want to be at that one. That's going to be an important one. But they're, they're doing their thing. I've talked a little bit, but there's no decisions to make right now, so they're just working at it. And working on the forty-five mile speed limit, that's a big one because it's something new and I feel, and I think most of the state feels, that Albany caused that with our uproar. And it's a statute that was put into place, kind of just for our purpose. The whole state can use it now because it is a statute, but we kind of launched that and that's something that you don't see very often. So it's a new statute, it's, we're still navigating how to make it work for us and soon you will see, hopefully, amendment to our noise ordinance for brakes, engine brakes. We're working on that too. So we had a petition out front for a while and we've got a lot of signatures. Everyone's seen to be on board, so we're going to- Everyone seemed to be on board, so we're going to move forward with that. So a lot of stuff happening, a lot of good stuff.
So the petition's been submitted with everyone's signatures to the state?
The pictures have been taken and sent to the right people at the right places and they get the message. And, but I said I have the petitions in hand, so. Conca knows us. They, they, one politician, prominent politician said that Albany has quite a roar, so good job to everybody in town, I say.
Thank you.
Just one thing about the marquee out there, that it stayed in November 5th, Election Day, since then until about a week ago, maybe five days ago. I think that if it had been taken down and nothing was on there and then all of a sudden something goes up that gets people's attention. Because today in the newspaper, you know, it's three times a week now, today's newspaper was the one announcing that today is voting and, and warrants day. So I knew it was coming because I saw it out on the marquee, I've been watching the board be untouched. So I'll be the sign person.
We're going to say, we'll look for...
Clock person.
Position is open.
That clock right there, I'll be the clock person. And I'll be the flag person.
Come on in, because that sign is...
That's welcome.
It's the kind of thing where you pull in, you see it, you say, oh, we're going to change that and then you get inside and it's gone.
I'll get to that later and you don't see it after a while, but...
And it's a pain to change and the num, those things you could have... Finally Jim did it because he...
I didn't do it.
We killed the middle.
I, I did it.
It was hard for me that I can change the sign because I did the news and the stop ball games and I was, I was hoping one of somebody would grab, so, yeah, I'll be...
Thank you. All right, everyone, I think we'll close the meeting now. Thank you everyone for coming out and happy 2025.